Planning his zoning commission to order. First item was roll call. Yes, Kevin's on.
Here.
Here, by remote. Otherwise.
You're by remote. Yeah, I apologize. I'm up in Vermont.
No, I just didn't see your name coming up.
Okay.
Did you get a lot of snow, Kevin?
I'm only twenty seven inches.
How much?
Twenty seven.
They had twenty five at Killington by the mountain. Alright, so. Next item is workshop text amendment pre-application data. And we want to let Jeff go over his. His input as first.
Okay. So, uh, first of all, I've got to apologize. I have a very bad head cold. I'm on cold medicine and I'm. It's not as sharp as I would like to be, uh, so please forgive me. So, uh, yes, uh, one thing I want to start with. And I apologize, I'm at home and I've got just my tiny little screen tonight. I did, uh, reach out to the top six employers in, um. Grotton to ask them some questions. About, uh, their use of data centers. Uh, just get a sense of, um. What their needs are, uh, compared to the, the regulations that we've been discussing. Uh, so, so you know, uh, those six businesses were there mayhem. I apologize. I'm not sure how to pronounce that. Uh, Mr. Richard Heine, uh, Susan Adams, Electric Boat, uh, Peter Lenios at LBI. Uh, Jesslyn Smith at Pfizer. And Amanda Volpe at, uh, PCC Structurals and, uh, Christine, uh, Latia Santiago at Chelsea Grotton. Uh, so of those six, uh, there were three that got back to me. Uh, Electric Boat, Pfizer and PCC Structurals. And, um, Richard Heine at their mayhem, uh. Wrote back and today I'm gonna talk to my, um. IT folks, uh, but I did not hear back from him. So asked them, uh, four major questions. One, does your company currently have its own operating data center in Grotton? And if so, we want to know how large it was in square feet and whether it was located indoors or outdoors. Uh, wanted to know if their company, uh, contracts with any offsite third-party data center for its computing and storage needs. Uh, want to know if the companies have any expectation for developing or expanding a data center in Grotton? And they just asked if they had any, uh, questions or information about data centers that they would like to share with the PCC. So, uh, for the first question, uh, does your company currently have its own operating data center in Grotton? Uh, again, we had three responses. Uh, one noted that, uh, they have a former data center. On their property that, uh, is leased by the state of Connecticut currently, and they're using, uh, the building for that purpose. Uh, another said that, um. What they have is they consider a local plant server room, uh, and not a data center. Uh, it's very small. And then another said that they have, uh, primary computer rooms onsite in Grotton that support their commuting, computing and storage needs. So then I asked you, how large is it? Uh, and where is it located? All of them were located indoors. Uh, the largest was just under twelve thousand square feet. I'm sorry?
No, just a little feedback. Sorry, Jeff.
Oh, okay. Uh, so the largest was just under twelve thousand square feet and the smallest was only eighty square feet. I mean, again, basically a closet, uh, and all of them were indoors. Uh, so we asked, um, do you have an offsite third-party data center for your computing needs? And, uh, Pfizer said they have a variety. So they have contracted data centers across the globe. Um, they've got some offsite proprietary locations, uh, and they do have. Um, some, some accommodations onsite. And then the other two said, yes, they both, uh, uh, use a third party for their computing needs. Um, so all of them, uh, I think seem to rely on, uh, third-party data centers as their primary source, and then they do have. Um, some ancillary, uh, facilities for their local needs. Uh, and then asked if they had any other questions for us as we were, uh, putting this together. Uh, there were none. Uh, there was just one person who commented that, or Electric Boat said, uh, you know, whatever we do. There's no plan, um, for them to ever construct a data center that would qualify for state incentives. Um, everyone sort of expects their local needs to stay rather small. They might expand a little bit. Uh, but no one's really expecting that to be a major component of what, what they need onsite. Um, so point being. I think, uh. The routes that you all are going, uh, you know, to allow these at a smaller scale. Uh, would likely not be, I mean, again, this was a sample size of three, um, but three fairly major employers in the, in the town. Who I think we're probably going in a direction that's not going to be problematic for most businesses in, in the community.
Uh, just one question, Jeff. What was the size of the middle one?
Uh, the middle one did not give me, uh, data on, uh, the size. So I had written back and said, hey, how la- how large is this? And I have not heard back yet.
Okay, thanks.
So the largest data center was twelve thousand square feet.
Yep. Yep. It was like eleven thou- eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-seven square feet, I believe.
Uh, inside the building, right, inside the building. That's great. Thanks. Thank you.
Well, you have to be, I think you have to be inside a building.
Well, I think the question was, um, which a lot of people, you'll see, um, a data center, um, it's a separate building, say with honest, within a site. So my understanding, not that it's out in the element, is that it would, it's within their physical core corporate structure, infrastructure. Okay.
So you know, it's not a separate structure. It's not, you know, we've shown, you've seen some of the pictures of, uh, the facilities where basically you've got a series of. Um, shipping container size structures, uh, outside. Um, so there's, there's none of that going on again among our sample size, although I don't expect the other three. Would be any different. So. Again, all that to say, I think, I think you're heading in the right direction. Uh, I did also, um, you know, obviously I updated. Uh, the draft based on our last conversation, um, Jeff Pritchard has, uh, also submitted. Uh, a proposal which honestly I thought was nice, simple, and, uh, uh, really wanted. To allow this group to have, uh, an opportunity to discuss that. Uh, alternative proposal a little bit more. I know you discussed a little bit last week, if I understand correctly.
We did.
You have anything else to report on Jeff or?
Uh, not for data centers. Again, uh, I could go line by line through the changes I made to my, uh, year to the last draft. But honestly, I've been trying to err towards simplicity and Jeff, I like the simplicity of what you. Had proposed, so I don't know if it would make the most sense to start there and see what people are. You know, comfortable with, with that draft, what, what, uh, concerns there may be.
Well, I guess one more question on your survey of the data center. Do you know what the zones over, those were in?
Uh, I don't know. I would have to ask, uh, Deb where those are located.
Yeah, um, I mean, the ones in the city are in an industrial zone. And then what was the first one? Not Pfizer and E V?
PCC.
PCC.
Industrial, that's over, um.
Set on one seventeen?
No, it's not. It's near, or what used to be R one.
Oh. Hooked down by the shopping center.
Okay, thank you.
That's not an industrial, but yeah.
Yes. Oh, industrial. It's interesting. Okay.
Well, they're probably the ones that would.
Yep.
Use a.
No, makes sense.
So you, Jeff, you think that it's realistic to. Use the size. So square footage size is a real basis for. Determining the control.
I do, particularly at the scale that we're talking about. I mean, all the things you've been reading, all the great materials that Kevin has been sharing. You know, from Loudoun County, that is going on at. You know, such a completely different scale than what you're talking about allowing here. And so I think, you know, as long as we're talking under twenty thousand square feet even, uh, or fifteen, um. That, uh.
Realist, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a realistic mea- measure and it's good for land use, I think.
Very much so, very much so.
Cause I, I think we have to be careful. That'll, we can really only control land use and some of these things are more political concerns. Like the financing and things like that. See, I mean, I can go over.
Yeah, and I apologize. I wasn't sure to what it come, to what level of detail you've discussed this already, so I, I defer to you.
Well, we really didn't go over it. In order, cause what, what I was concerned with is. What are, what are really objective is, is to make sure that, that if you allow data centers. That they're compatible or not incompatible. With the area where they could be. That's really what we're talking about for zoning. I think it's a basic, basic concern. So. So I, I wanted to take on, to start with the definition. I wanted to say basically what the state was doing, but taking out anything that was maybe more financial oriented, like the last portion. Of their, uh. Definition. It was pertaining to a particular business or classification or body of knowledge. I don't think it's pertinent because we can't control. What's going, what's going on inside. And not to, and I think that's very important to have a good definition. So we don't have somebody trying to come in outside of the definition and getting something that we don't want.
Yeah, and, and I think it's also data is gonna change.
And it will be different. Yeah, well, that's.
I was going, we weren't talking crypto and I don't think in five years we're gonna talk about.
No, but it, it doesn't make any difference. It's just the basics. It's data to make sure. Process, processing it through, uh, servers or whatever, but.
So where were we?
And then.
Oh, sorry. So in that definition, where were we put the period that we're gonna?
Well, I did that. That's when I took that stuff. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I took that out.
Maybe leave it after data or?
I'll leave it, uh, yeah, I think it goes after inform, data and information.
Right, okay.
Hmm, right.
I think that.
About the business and you don't care about the classification.
No.
The knowledge is.
Okay. It's just that trying to say it's digital data processing. They're controlling the pathway of the electrons through a maze. Okay.
Good, thank you.
I don't know whether, does this even eliminate the use for accessory or not? I don't know. It may, may, they still want it. Okay.
I was thinking maybe we shouldn't just call them all data centers since they're small.
The only difference would be, I guess, what zones they were in.
Right.
And you might wanna, yeah.
I guess that's another.
But maybe we would expand if we're taking size, have it small. We could expand. The areas where they could go.
I mean, if right now they're only in industrial, right?
Yeah, but we could take them out of there.
If it's small, if it's accessory, you could have it in commercial, you could have it someplace.
Or, or.
If it has a sound recommendation, what else would?
Or if it's business like the bank, they're probably having the, the bank, uh, building there under one. They could put a data center in there and I don't think that would be a problem.
Or even if I had a appendage that was a data center, that we'd probably be okay with that.
Yeah.
We'd still probably put the sound thing in there just because why not, but.
Hmm, so it would fit in that.
Right. It would seem also that, I mean, given these sizes that Jeff, Jeff, thank you for that information. That was really helpful. The twelve thousand being the large and the eighty feet being the small, and I'm, I'm gonna guess. That we're probably looking at the PCC structural was the small one and, you know, that's a small business and so you're. I mean, not a small business, but I mean, it's like probably comparable to like what a bank or something else would have needs for, right? So we're not talking.
I don't think we're talking about.
Huge, large, huge spaces, but actually just said, you know, anything under you would. In your little charger, you said had a maximum of ten thousand, I think.
Oh, I just did this to give people an idea of what size of.
And I think frankly, you get ten thousand. Now, I look more and more and say, that's not really that bad.
No, I, I did that just because I didn't have a good feeling to say, what's ten thousand feet? And so I just guessed that. At, uh, rough sizes.
So if we're, we, we, I think we'd come up with something.
I would just pick the number.
That, that's fine. I'm thinking it's, actually, I think you mentioned that anything under fifteen thousand would probably be fine.
Well, maybe fifty.
And, and I don't think that's too big.
No, I don't either.
I mean, we don't have that. I don't, from what I'm hearing from Jeff, I mean, they've currently got. Whatever, it's all working, right? It's not like there's a need to expand. So there's no one in this town, I don't think, who's looking to put. Another ten or twelve or fifteen thousand feet.
Yeah, but I.
At this moment.
No, but.
No, 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 I'm just saying that it's not, we're not hurting.
Exist.
Current existing.
But it might also allow an IT company to come in or somebody to set up a new IT company in Grotton. That you had some data center and could service, say, multiple businesses that don't want to have their own IT outfit, which might make sense.
Be perfect sense.
But I think because of that, because it is new. I think I'd err on the size of a smaller, um, maximum. And because we have noise standards to come up with, which is not gonna be easy, this burp idea, I think, given the present.
Yeah, that was great, I think.
Interesting to, you know, six feet. I don't know. It's gotta be.
Well, that's why I tried to address that. In the thing if we want to.
Actually, I think.
I'd just say there's a lot of moving pieces, like electricity, water.
But if you, if you've addressed them, I mean, I'll just, just to the sound before we talk about it, is the sound is the sound. If it's a million square feet or two square feet, it could be really noisy or really quiet. It doesn't matter. That's the regulation. So the size and the sound are two separate things. How big it is and how noisy it is, has no connection if we're requiring it to be quiet.
I don't think we have the sound.
Yes, we, we do, and actually, though, you were saying seven point four feet.
Well, that's the existing.
That's the existing, but that one's not good enough. What he had before, actually, what Jeff had before, which now I can't find. Had a little more.
There's a lot of different frequencies.
The sound signature, he had the sound signature in it, the existing sound signature, and that goes to the waveform too. Which means it'll be exactly as quiet as it is now.
And the types of sounds too. It was.
Doesn't matter. Exactly as it, it's a sound signature, which is.
Now, what is a sound signature?
That means it's volume, it means it's waveform, it means everything about it. Which means that you can only, you have to leave it, have, it's exactly whatever there is, is what we will have.
We know that that's gonna work in a real life situation.
It always can, always designed that way. Now, whether you do it with a berm, whether you do it with a wall, we, we don't really care. There's lots of ways to get there. And however the size is, it doesn't matter because so long as that's it.
Signature.
And signature is exactly the, the same, and it's done on an hourly basis, seven days a week, so that can, absolutely did take care of it.
If you think that's realistic.
And I think, oh, I think it absolutely.
It's not over doing things.
But I don't think it is. I think it ever is.
No, I just, I think we just have to make sure we.
I mean, with, at all. Widows, we always had the problem because people were saying it's too noisy during the day. And the guy stood out there on the property line and said, it's sixty-five D B. That's not exceeding.
It's a state standard though. That's the problem.
Okay, well, in this.
This would be a no standard.
Standard.
Understand that, that's why.
Yeah, this would be much tighter and the answer would be, but what's, it's not machinery. The widow has a problem moving machinery around, so.
Yeah, it's an odd, this is more on and off.
Behind concrete, toward concrete walls, and they can do whatever they want for sound.
Right, but I think the other thing too, we were discussing was. The setback you would need, which I believe is thirty feet. From the property line or?
Well, I took that because it's an existing buffer.
Yeah, existing buffer in the zoning regulation.
If, if I could wait in here for a second on this one. So if you look at some of the regulations, so first, Jeff, the other day I said, you know, I just hadn't read what you had in detail, what you had put together, and I really do believe. That it provides some thought leadership in a planning and zoning commission, because we also explained where data centers are going. Where is these edge or nodal type of data centers being located closer to businesses, et cetera. That are becoming the new norm. Hyperscale owners are gonna be where they want to tier fours, right? So you've kind of listened to what our documentation said and what I've said, so I think it provided some real, um, thought leadership. But if you read Loudon, which is in a different scale than we're talking about, they have regulations that are, are, are twofold. Number one, they're stating that, um, they cannot be adjacent to residential areas. At all, right? Um, and there's some documentation in there, and one of the articles I believe I sent that talk about. Um, peak shaving, which you have mentioned, and the point is, you'll never be able to track it. And people, if you give them a, um, a dollar figure they have to pay, rather than lose their data operations, they're just gonna pay the debt, the dollar. If you can even track that. It's a very difficult thing to track. So when Wallingford, if you look at what he did, which by the way, their planning and zoning has, has dropped this completely. They, um, it's a special permit only. They were at five hundred feet from a residential area. And the power had to be at seven hundred and fifty feet. It became too complex for them and they just dropped it, right? So I do like the thought leadership you provided, but I think we need to add some adjacencies on there, particularly residential. It cannot be adjacent to a residential property, and then we can just talk about setbacks, but it's not thirty feet, in my opinion.
Right. No, I think that makes sense.
Well, if they're small, does it really make a difference? I mean, would you notice it?
Right again, if it's small and it's, and we've got the noise standard, I mean, when you think about, all right. If Electric Boat is gonna be one of the biggest examples that we've got. But all right, let's, let's play the thought exercise of, uh, some new business comes to town and wants, wants to build one of these new, right? Um, first of all. At the scale you're talking about, well, one, we've got, we've already got the language in, in the current draft and the last two drafts, it says this has to be serving. A local business. So right now, the, the language that we have says that. You can't build something and then have it be servicing someone who's offsite. So that's something we can revisit if that's, if that's something you're, you're comfortable with, but right now. We say you can't, it's gotta, it's gotta serve your.
My write-up was intent, my write-up was delete that.
Yes, I know.
And just control by size, so that it would allow a new data center to come in. Maybe it's owned by somebody, but not to restrict for the data comes from. I don't think that's realistic.
I don't think it is either. I was just trying to remind everyone where we are with the, the last draft that I wrote. And. Sorry, I'm trying to focus. So let's say we go with Jeff's route and we've got a new, new company that comes in. I mean, one, if you're restricting this to fifteen thousand square feet. Like, that's not really of a size where like, that's your primary business and you're, you know, you're serving the data center for clients. Um, like, the scale is just not there to make that a viable business, from what I understand. But, uh, yeah, if we're looking at, this is all indoors and everyone has to comply with the, the sound issues. And you've got your normal buffer for industrial uses. I don't know that. I don't know that you need. Like, you know, additional buffers beyond that.
Well, the only thing that might drive it is the backup power. And I looked at that and saying that you can only use that in an emergency situation. Unless it's from a non-fossil fuel source, such as it would wind, the windmills or solar panels. So it, that's where the biggest noise sources, I would think, are the air conditioning units. And the backup power.
Diesel generator.
A diesel generator.
Then is this backup power gonna meet these noise standards zero?
No, 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 that's why. It's no, because that's an, that's an emergency. No, they wouldn't.
It's likely it wouldn't be able to be heard over everybody else's backup generators.
Yeah, right, but that's a good point. But that's gonna be a short time. Probably if they're a big user, they would have a pretty direct. Connection to, uh, power source.
Yeah, so I appreciate what you did with that, Jeff. I thought it was. Simple and neat and addresses the issue, particularly at the scale of data center that we're talking about.
Well, that's, I was hoping it would control it, that it would be too expensive to make it too big using some of these regular controls.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. But it gives us some opportunity.
Be too expensive.
We are pro-business. Right, but it's also good land use if possible for a smaller industrial lot that basically says, yeah, you can put in a nodal data center. Answer is absolutely. So, what do you guys feel about the decent residential, which, you know, I thought that was, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Well, no, if you look at where the zones are and what's around them, on a famous zoning map. You'll see that there's really a lot of housing, um. I mean, you could work around it, but there is, there's housing going right in the middle of some of the industrial zones, I think, as you probably know. And some of it where it's right next to it. But for example, the airport one, you got water on what, three quarter sides and, um. And you really, housing's very limited on that one. I think it's the other one, the, the mixed use or a lighter industrial. On the I, where you've actually got, was it Hazel Nut Hill Road? Because houses, as we know, is of course in an industrial zone.
But the problem we, we may be concerned with is a lot of residents exist in other than the art zones.
Right, but I, I, I think for the industrial zone, it might make sense to say that the data center should not be next to a residential area.
Oh, I agree.
I think it would make a lot of.
That was my only point, right, too. And you were just a little more detailed.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Leonard Drive.
Yeah, we should probably be conservative.
This is, this is right.
Exactly, that's.
High rock road, right?
Definitely.
I think we are conservative.
And there is residential in, like, within the IG South Road. Hmm, and, uh, you know, that, I mean, that, those houses are.
That's true, yeah, there's.
Compromised because of that.
They're also next door to her.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I mean, it's.
That's a lot of noise, yeah, but it's pretty well, they have noise all around.
Yeah.
While they use it for those helicopters.
Coast Guard takes off.
No, the helicopter training tour or, or the facility has.
The airplane.
Lot more noise in.
Five o'clock in the morning, I hear them.
We have business jets going down to Washington or.
Then, uh, industrial drive, and my concern up here is. I mean, and that's just that one Amtrak building and who knows, you know, it's just there, but it's, uh. Um, you know, a couple buildings. We're talking about neighborhoods that are already. Being heavily impacted by industrial use and then you don't want to make it worse for these people. I don't, I don't believe, I don't want to.
Yeah, but to Al's point, Al's point, you're not gonna make it.
No, I know that. I realize, and that's why I want to be most conservative if I can, you know.
If we use health. I said, but I'm, I'm back to the idea of what is it that we'd be making worse? Cause if it's not, look of it, the setback, if it wasn't noisy, the setback would have to be, what's this thing look like going on? Let's get some buffer, but that's something. So forget about the noise, what else is it? Or lights, okay.
Lights.
Well, yeah. Environmental. Environmental meters, right?
But if I had a, if I had a, a, you know, thirty by four hundred Butler building out there that I was doing warehousing in and repairing clock radios in. In, in one of these areas, it would be just as big, would have. I'd need, I'd need to air condition it. I would have runoff from the roof. I would have, it would be that big a building. So what else? And we would permit it. We would, it would be fine. So what, what, what's the difference? Except for the noise, or we'll say the power usage, we're getting strict on that, but what's the difference then?
Emergency backup is gonna be.
Well, then.
A lot of businesses have.
Yeah, if it's emergency backup.
Something for a data center.
Not, not at this level.
No, I don't think that.
I mean, you're talking about a big.
But how often do you?
No, I, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, go off for a day or two every year.
Yeah, it's a hurricane.
So I, I think that one's safe, and honestly, everybody starts running their emergency generators.
Yeah, it's a whole neighborhood.
It's a whole neighborhood, sounds horrible, and that's the way we go. We all went to job lot, we got. Power generators and they're, they are what they are. Power generators and they're, they are what they are. These are probably better than most.
I'll think some of these neighbors, I doubt there's a lot of generators going, but.
No, then they're without power.
I think too, for people to hear, there's going to be a data center next to their residential lot. Rightly or wrongly, that's going to be a big deal.
But they may not even know it exists today.
Well, they will because ask them in here for a permit.
No, I mean, they're.
Well, today, I understand today.
Today, and they probably don't even know.
Oh, like a town bill, you know, you go in the town bill.
I wonder if we need to consider that, like, because I know we spoke about this before, is that setback for industrial? Maybe the thirty feet isn't enough throughout.
Yeah, but that was done for noise.
Yeah.
And if we have another, if noise takes it over, we can just use a regular buffer for a building.
Whatever it is, if we we were doing that for noise, which is a fact.
The noise was for noise.
Now we're going way above and beyond by saying, no worse than it exactly is right now. It's incredibly strict and that's that's the thing that takes care of. Enough room to have visual buffers.
And that that I think quite, it's going to make it a smaller.
Right, I I think if you if you lead with that, you say, okay, you're going to get a data center, however. There'll be no change in the noise now, other, well, otherwise you can't measure it, otherwise you can't get a permit, yeah.
Well, the the thing is though, that these tests are going to be done after the fact, right? I mean, you can't.
Well, then they don't got to see the certificate of.
That's that's something that that people can do.
That part true, but they.
Oh, the people can't do you that.
No, I mean, the business could could be expected to be able to bring it down to zero or one.
No, it's not zero.
No, I mean to where it wasn't for. Yeah, I don't, I didn't mean to say.
If I don't think they can, then they won't, if they think it's too much for a risk.
They aren't going to do it, yeah.
So there's any number of construction things that you do, that if you think it's too much for a risk, I'm going to build this thing, it's on swampland right now. Can I pull it off? I don't know, but it's worth the risk hiring some engineer to be recordings to try to do some things. Although I just spent a half million dollars trying to clear the land and I still can't build it. Oh, well, that's the way it goes. I don't think it's any different, except I think this is much more definable acoustic.
It is.
Is very definable.
And I think the equipment that's makes a noise is easy to to obtain today. I mean, it's all, yeah, normal air conditioning units.
And all that, all that's missing is the baffling that would take it out. We're talking about, they know what the sign, what the sign waves are for these things. And they know how to do it. It's just normally they don't incur the extra cost to do it and saying, this is a place where you would.
I don't think it's going to be necessarily good for property values, have a data center next to your lot.
How about, okay, let's go, I gotta, I gotta stop, I gotta stop, I gotta jump in here for a second. Let's remember, we're, are we, I I just want to be clear, are we still talking about? Residential uses within the industrial zones?
Yeah.
Or directly adjacent to it. There are any number of things that you can build by right that are going to be far more noxious and loud and annoying. Uh, if you're, if you're in an industrial zone and we need to, I I've got to keep drilling on this. We, if we're going, if we're unsatisfied with the performance standards for industrial uses. Then we need to address them universally because I think we're now at a point and how I completely agree with you. We are now trying to put extra standards on uh data centers when. Really, these are things that should apply across the board. There are far worse things if I lived in an industrial zone. That I would want moving in next door to me. Um, and we we really don't want to go down the path of applying all these regulations to data centers and not to other uses. Uh, which is why I still still say, if you're comfortable with what I did for the the noise. That that should be adopted, not under data centers, but as part of your noise standards for any industrial use.
It's fear of the unknown. I mean, we just don't know what somebody will propose and I was surprised if you don't have it as a special permit. This would be permitted.
Well, I don't know what's special about it. I mean, we are, if you have a.
Well, it would be.
Regulations.
Yeah, it would be a hearing.
I don't think we could put additional constraints.
Don't think a small data center has much impact at all. I think it's only these large ones that have large air conditioning units and use a lot of water for cooling. Those are the two, what I see is the two major issues. The other is just building size. And you don't, probably don't want a hu- huge one there by joining them together. That's why I thought. Putting in a requirement that you can't have a data center within fifteen hundred feet of another one. Would prevent somebody building a whole bunch of small ones on small lots or making small lots. And then tying them together and you're getting up with your large stats.
Are you sure with a ten thousand square foot? Data center by right?
I would think so.
Okay, I'm.
And then how?
Twenty.
How, how do you? Or maybe even go a little larger, I don't know.
To go as what Jeff was saying, though, how do we have a fifteen hundred? We don't do that with other industrial uses. We don't say, can't put. A machine shop fif- you can only have one every fifteen hundred feet or whatever else it is, we don't do that.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I mean, I I think that that's to me.
Well, that was.
Kind of critical because you get these, you know, I don't know what.
Well, it depends how much noise the air conditioning.
Okay, how if we just.
And add them up.
Keep in mind, I'll do a worst case, which you maybe can identify with. Let's just say we have. Whatever we do here, we have to compare it to having industrial wood shop with a with a sawdust collection system.
Yeah, they're probably worse.
With turbines that are always on the outside to control dust, they're horrifyingly noisy. And we wouldn't prevent them. So long as there was enough setback, we'd say, hey, you got seventy by the lot line, we're okay. And that wine will drive you crazy. If it was successful, it's going to go twenty four seven and we're not stopping it right now unless we decide now. We will start imposing, here's our new sign, here's our new sound system, our new sound.
And we need no stunts.
And it's it's achievable, you can do it in this town because we have residential everywhere. And that's what we would do for that. Same with size. Size only matters. If you can control the runoff, well, you have to do that now anyway. But I mean, we got a lot of that in a particular situation. Size kind of doesn't matter if it's in an industrial. I don't know why you've been compared to the wood shop. How would that be any difference?
Well, I I think. So yeah, that's all well and good, but I think. In any event, we're going to have noise standards which should help, like you're saying, different businesses coming in for sure. But I still think it's really important to have these by special permit, or at least have some way the public can come in. And make their ass question.
A particular piece of property.
That's like W R P, for example, too, you know. I mean, you know, we want to make sure that that all the things are in place for a data center. We wanted to say, oh, it's all right, you can do whatever you want. No, I I think we'd be. Be a lot better to work with the residential people, to give them opportunities, to voice their concerns, like we always do in other things. I just think that that'd be a s- a much better way to go than to just say, oh.
Yeah, but that's the zoning map that exists.
I understand that, but for the particular use of data, because it involves water, power.
No, we're taking the water out.
Water's gone.
Just water, it prohibits the use.
See, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take the water out.
Why?
I mean, you don't want to ask what their water requirements are.
They're saying you can't use it for.
Fabrication.
Oh, that.
For cooling, that's where the big.
That's fine, but, well.
You still can use it in your toilets and.
So all there is is rainwater.
So, yeah, I don't know, I, because I don't know the essence, so, um, because that was a concern is. What's the impact going to be on ground utilities, the life of the data center, right? The same with electric.
That's not our response.
Is that true, Kevin? We wouldn't have worried about that?
Well, if they're fifteen thousand, I think it'd be a very low risk. Um, if they were ready to serve a tier four hyperscaler, I'm sure they can serve a fifteen thousand or ten thousand square foot data center.
And the way that Jeff pictured this, this, his draft, it prohibits. Um, data centers from using water as their cooling uh technique. Uh, so it wouldn't, you're there literally just be a normal use of water in that building if that were, that were instituted.
So that would take care of the water problem.
That's right.
And the energy problem?
That.
For a small data center?
The energy problem was no diesel generators for power shaving.
And there's, um.
That's right, yeah, I don't know, no, no peak shaving, that's a separate business, that's that's a power plant.
Yes.
Well, it's a data center.
It's peak shaving, then it's, there's.
It's an onsite.
It's an onsite power plant.
It is. For me, I think the special permit wouldn't, I would probably feel better with that in there, just. I mean, and maybe it's not necessary, but I don't see the harm, but if it were to be a.
But then we have to be careful, we have some rules or requirements that we put in. If we want, I don't object to.
Have it be a special permit with conditions, so you made up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's similar to other regulations.
Right, okay.
Yeah. I'm just circling back, did you guys decide, come to some sort of consensus on a maximum size?
Right, no, we actually haven't yet.
No.
It keeps going up.
No, I mean, I I'm looking at the numbers, thinking that we already, I mean, I don't know what. I mean, electric boat is a, I don't know who that twelve thousand was, was that Pfizer or was that E B?
Uh, I'd have to go back and look, it was one.
Because it sounded like Pfizer, you, the way you said.
Pfizer's because E V doesn't have.
Yeah, I guess, I mean.
Database.
Oh, no, they, they sounded like they had it international and everything else.
Oh, that was Pfizer.
I suppose it doesn't make, my point is that these are large. Operators, I think, because it seems like electric Pfizer, they're big, big. Well, operations and.
E B probably has the biggest.
I mean, I don't know.
Computers.
Who who's going to use another twelve thousand square?
Yeah, so it was Pfizer.
No, no, I'm just trying to, you know, how we, what what we're trying to attract here.
Yeah, well, I was saying, so. Not attract anything to allow it if.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, the town would like to, I understand, the town has a need to attract.
No, this.
For us to to make sure it keeps, we kind of align with that, but don't ruin neighborhood.
We don't want us.
No, these are our big jewels of the town and they have really small data.
Yeah, right.
There's no demand for this.
Well, that's. That that part does, right now, there's not not demand for commercial, what we wish it was.
Where we started, it was a fifty megawatt.
Yeah, I know.
Fifty megawatt facility that an outside entity wanted to put in.
I understand.
And they wanted to put it in, which on a piece of property that was adjacent to residential. Houses, and so that's where we started and that could happen again. And so whatever we build in has to be. You know, with that in mind, that somebody from outside to town, we don't have anything in here, that was in. That Jeff's requirement that had to serve the town, but yours does.
No, because it doesn't. Because I don't think it makes any.
I don't think it does either.
In fact, you.
It's just the size.
Given technology which keeps making stuff smaller, I forget what that Kevin's probably knows, that exact. What what's that called? That keeps things getting smaller, therefore more data. So it gets, it's a smaller place.
Well, Moore's law is power that every eighteen months it doubles, but whatever, what it does is the smaller transistor, right?
Smaller transistor, yeah. And I just, I just heard some other mind boggling step that they're now making for the United States, which makes us. It just gets so small, it's like, you know, a dozen times smaller. We already have billions of transistors. In a chip, in a chip, you know, how much farther can it go? And the answer is it can still keep going farther so that how much. A ten thousand or fifteen thousand or twenty thousand facility, uh, square foot facility can handle, will keep increasing. Yeah, which is a good thing. And so at some point, they'll say, oh, no, twenty thousand's all we need to do all this cloud computing. And we'll say, fine, you can put one here, just make it quiet.
And that brings up my next question on the energy. Because if you have the same footprint on these things. And things do improve over time, get more efficient, you know, whatever speed goes up. Does the energy level, uh, how does that affect that? And what kind of energy requirement are we talking about, saying a ten thousand square foot?
Yeah, I had that question, I don't think, I don't think.
We can control that.
I don't think we can draw it, but if we want to though, then we have to. How would you control it on a, on a?
No, it's not controlling it, it's what is it? They just ballpark.
So what, what, why do we, if we know, what would we do about it? If you want to, you would want to limit it.
Well, that's it, yeah, no, you'd want to limit it.
We want.
No, I wouldn't want it. I want to know, oh, the question is, is a capacity. Um, electric, you know, requirement, can G U satisfy that over the next, say, twenty years?
Yeah, without affecting other businesses, I guess that's that would be a consistent.
We're buying electric cars.
Where's that electricity?
That's right.
And as more windmills go up, wind turbines go up out in the ocean, then it'll keep, it'll keep changing, so I don't.
That's business.
We have to depend on wind turbines.
That, well, I understand that, or whatever else.
But no, I think it's, I think.
Thirty years from now, you might have fusion, but I don't.
Understand what kind of requirement is this a problem at all for a local utility?
I think that.
That's our hooked into this whole.
Have we ever done that before?
Yeah.
I think that's the business.
Well, I do care.
Why?
Because it will affect the rest of this plan.
No, it doesn't.
Potentially, that's.
No, if if the Grotton utility needs so much power. They they're going to have to get it or a business isn't going to come in and say, I'm gonna, I need twice as much power as you have available.
Don't you want to know that if in?
That's their problem.
No, it's going to be our problem. In five years, they can't get enough power, rates go over the moon. Nobody wants to go to Grotton because electricity is, you know, talk about mystic.
Well, that's what all these states are doing where they're mandating selling electric cars only. Where's that power come from?
From your.
Wait, nobody's saying where it is.
But I don't know how electric car requirements versus data center.
Because they're going to use more power if everybody has an electric car. Where are you going to get all that electricity?
Yeah, that's what these progressives think. Well, these progressives think that's okay, but but. I don't know if that matters to it. It's an alarming thing and the public should care about that, but as far as a zoning thing. Unless we have some numbers that we're going to hold on to, we can't write it into what we're doing.
I think that's.
I'm not suggesting right again. One, it's an electric, like the use of water.
Yeah.
And it's a use of like electricity.
One of the points that I made in, when we were talking about a fifty megawatt system. Was that the backup power for that is enormous. Fifty megawatts and diesels, you know, if if you've ever seen, you know, you know what submarine diesel looks like. Hmm, you know, and, you know, so this, this is a very large power plant, put it that way. And a lot, a lot of fuel storage. If it's diesel fuel storage, it's hundreds of gallons an hour. I don't know if it's as big as, it's noisy as you're thinking, but do, does either of you know how, we've got like three or four. Peak shaving plants scattered around town. We approve them by this board.
Yeah, there's one that, yeah, yeah, down.
We've got one near you, yeah, we've got a pop pot of planes, one up in center Grotton. But they're peak shaving.
G U put them in.
Somebody, a contractor came and said, let's just put them in.
Yeah, there's one by the water treatment, there's one up, up in the, by the base.
And they're big and they're noisy.
Well, they're as big as a tractor trailer or something like, well, a couple.
That's great, but I I'm just wondering what their capacity is, and I I believe it's really substantial. For, they're not meant to run constantly, they're meant to run a couple hours a day.
Right, but it'd be really nice to have some numbers.
Okay, but I need to be able to do something with it, I'm not going to do anything with it and.
There's a number over there.
So, I know, Kevin, do you have any idea what a smaller ten thousand?
Well, I don't know, I don't know it to that degree, but I know Moore's law as well as anyone in the United States, because that's where I work for, right? And the point is, as transistors become smaller. And it does not equate to the same power envelope that you once had. In fact, that's what we always battle with it. So that the power is not going to follow as much as this, the shrinking of transition, transistors. Doesn't mean more power, but it's not going to equate to the same type of degree. Um, and they, maybe the parallel would be, um, if airplanes did what. We've done in transistors, they'd be able to get from California to New York in twelve seconds, right? And so it doesn't equate, but I think if we can just bring the conversation, because Jeff, I think you did provide some thought leadership. I think we're at two levels. Either one, um, we say no data centers, but for corporate accessory data centers. It is X amount of feet and or special permit, we allow that, we're trying to attract business as well as great land use. Or we put it down to ten thousand square feet, I don't like it adjacent to any residential area and we write the the regs around that.
That might be a good starting point.
I guess.
Good start. Till we get.
And of course, in the first two drafts, I did, we have the stipulation that the utilities have to. Sign off and say, yes, we have the capacity to support.
That's right.
You do. You just don't put the term they have to, you know, be able to support it.
And we can't. No, yes, I did.
Did you put a twenty year term or something? Um, take a look.
I mean, again, it's an on. I mean, again, it's an ongoing.
Yeah, it's, to me, it's just seems like we gotta pick a number and then, you know, go with that and then. Um, how about the WRPD? How do people feel about that? I'm sort of. You know, uh, I, I, well, the thing that matters to me is, uh, fuel storage. Uh, then the, you know. Um, I'd be opposed to having, uh, any kind of massive. Benny, you know, you're just not gonna store propane, maybe, or if you can do that of natural gas.
Industrial uses in that area other than data centers would be allowed to have.
Exactly.
So they can have this.
Unless you wanna go forward.
Yeah.
Again, like if you're concerned about that, then we need to, uh, you know, amend the WRPD.
And then how about the fire hazard?
And we do have, there's already, uh, very strict standards for how. Hazardous materials are stored and managed, uh, in the WRPD. So like, if you feel that that's inadequate, then we readdress that.
And then the other issue is the fire hazard, cause I do know that these things are a higher risk of fire, so that would be a concern.
Take care of it.
I'm sure, but that's the fire.
Yeah, no, I, well, it's, you know, I wanna make sure that, that these. Because that's a, an area that. Regardless of the, how low the risk is, I don't wanna, I'm not willing to compromise. On the, you know, yeah, so I, I wanna be comfortable about that. The WRPD is that.
Which is worse than fire hazard, one of these things, or a woodworking shop.
Well, yeah, no, it's okay. Well, when it burns, what's coming out of it and what's? What's, uh, hitting the ground and the smoke that's coming from it and everything else when that happens or if there's? And I don't know. I don't really know that much about these things to know what happens. I've seen photos on the internet of these things when they burn. It is, it isn't pretty, you know?
And that is one condition that Jeff has printed into these drafts. It's a. You know, it's a, a plan that is approved by the local fire marshal with higher suppression.
And then, you know.
The best we can do.
Do we have the, I just, I, you know, that's it. I just wanna make sure that that is absolutely protected.
Let me go back to the, the oil thing, so. Moved on, but. Within the WRPD, do we want to just say, no, you can't? Uh, and, and again, I don't know why we, we get to say that. Cause we'd be saying that. Unless you wanna limit the size of the emergency power, that might be a way. We're gonna limit the size of the emergency power and say it based on, and I think we should be doing that sometimes. To write why we're saying things. Based on the total capacity of the fuel, which would mean if they do come up with propane as their backup material. Or natural gas, then we don't care. It's a lot of backup systems do use, that's gasoline, so if they use natural gas or propane, we don't care. But you can limit the size of an oil-fired emergency generator. That we can just do.
Well, we'd have to do that across the board.
For every, I, I think we should, maybe we should.
But that wouldn't be a data center change.
It's not. But that's where we're kind of coming up with something.
And maybe that's.
Totally valid. Say, okay, these are things we also have to knock out for everybody. We just realized it.
Yeah.
Kind of, uh, bring it back to the idea of where, where should we sell liquors? Same place we should sell cannabis.
Well, going back to number four, which I think Jeff is what you were talking about, where you're talking about utility notification?
Yep.
Yeah, that's where, uh, basically it had no special permit granted or the section becomes effective, blah, blah, blah. Uh, I have to demonstrate that the Dallas Energy Utility demands can be met at the proposed location. And I would just add for the life of Addison or for the estimated life of Addison.
Okay.
Can anybody estimate?
Right, I, no. I mean.
Well, sure they can. Everything has an estimated life.
You got to the extent.
Accounting purposes, you have to have an estimated life.
Now, does that, in fact, does that statement actually need to say? Yeah, we can meet the demands. We're just gonna jack up everybody's prices by double or something like that. Yeah, but they just, but so is it meet demands? But maintain the status quo is what I'm just trying to say. It's another thing that we don't want the town to now be affected by.
That's right, so they should be able to meet.
Yeah, but if you, the more electric power you use, the cost goes down.
That's kind of true. Should be true. That's what, that's. Because as long as they don't need to buy it from someplace else.
No, even if you buy it, the most expensive part on your bill, it's not the kilowatt. It's a distribution system, but new telephone poles that you gotta replace when the marina catches on fire.
That's true. Okay.
If you look at the bill, that's what it is. And the more power you, you use, your kilowatt hour charge goes down. Unless you go over an excessive amount or. Like a company like EB pays more if they go over their.
Well, that's where you get to the peak.
Because they need more distribution.
That's great. That's, 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 that's why.
It's not the kilowatt.
It's not the worst time of day.
No, it's, they do that peak charging.
Yeah.
It, whenever it occurs, it doesn't make any difference. Maybe for a year or a month or a while.
All right.
So, yeah.
Are we narrowing down at all?
I think we're getting there, okay, around the.
Well, you kind of bad, so. Size.
Size, shall we just say fifteen K or ten K?
I heard ten from Kevin. I like that.
Because that's bigger than what he's.
Bigger than what we.
We already have something that's larger than ten.
So let's do fifteen.
How about in the, are, are we treating both the IG and the IM the same? Are we allowing these things?
For size, I'd say, yeah.
Well, let's talk about size first, cause I would.
Okay.
Well, it's still fifteen thousand.
Well, that's why I was. My only reason I brought that up is maybe you wanna do different, but maybe not.
Might be some things, but not the size.
I like the idea of size.
So let's say fifteen thousand feet on smacks.
I like the idea of ten thousand because, um, there's only one in town that's even above that. And I think it's a start to just make sure we've got everything that's working like.
But what's the difference?
What's the difference?
Yeah.
Because, oh.
And you're starting, actually, it's three thousand. What does that bias?
It's half of a red port.
Open, open biases though.
Well, then you say, oh, why not a hundred thousand?
No, that's, well, that's not, that's, uh, we're saying fifteen. I would say twenty offhand because I'm looking at the sizes of it. I could build a twenty thousand square foot ones. I could fit it on my lot. I think my little lot, it's mystic. I could fit twenty thousand square feet, not by the regulation. It's not a huge building. Yeah, um. Jeff, and Jeff's right up. He said twenty thousand square foot. Minimum, so a half acre minimum. No. And if you put ten thousand foot building in.
Ten thousand. I mean, keep in mind, the underlying zoning district has coverage requirements.
Right. In IG, is it fifty is allowed? This is, I guess, I could, this is indicating that even if you just put a thousand square foot facility. It's still only twenty thousand square feet. You know, that's what this is.
Yeah, so you couldn't build it in a small lot, right?
No matter what.
Yeah, so it gives you.
And that includes that's lot coverage of the building or is that?
All buildings.
Of all buildings. Okay, that's, that's not, uh. Impermeable area that's just the building. So the particular combination of half acre lot with ten thousand square foot building would not be permitted. You know, you would have to get bigger.
That could be a lot, right?
So I'm, I'm good for. I, I definitely don't think we should do smaller than a thing we already have, because we are, especially if now we're saying it can be somebody. In the next town over, using this thing.
Well, compromise, I'll say twelve.
Five, five, do I hear twelve, five, five?
I think that's what, I think the thing is, is that I, you know, I don't know what the right number is, but like I said before, I would, oh, I would prefer. And we can always revisit this in a year or two years. Or whatever this and see what. What, you know, what happens if this is working or if people are coming to us and saying, we need. Another thousand feet, you know?
That's, that's a good way to do it.
That'd be a reason to say, uh, back to my thing about saying. Why you, ha- ha- got my, uh. My woodworking shop and I.
Yeah, no, 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 I get it.
Thirteen thousand square.
No, I get it.
Let me.
Well, that's why maybe the special permit would be beneficial, because then maybe you still, and I kinda like the idea of letting people. You know, whatever it is, but whatever. Way in, I'm, I'm gonna solicit.
That X goes on the table, you never see it.
And, and the other thing is, is. You know, you know, it gives.
As far as permitted by right.
Yeah.
Transparency and people weighing in.
You know, this is kind of a new animal and that's why I, I kinda leaned, I thought that our first question from that Jeff. Was, do you want this as special permanent? I thought we had consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, special permit with conditions is why we came up with special permit because at the time. And. Thought we'd have them, but that we're, we kind of backed it down, says a lot of. I still kinda lean towards, I, I think I'd like a special permit.
Yeah.
All right.
And that means, I mean, these things aren't gonna be flooding in.
No, they're pretty rare, yeah.
And, and truthfully, if it's, if it does what we are asking them to do and they meet those conditions, then.
Yeah.
Then maybe we don't have a problem. But it, but we don't, we don't have, we can't. We, if we do have a problem, that'll be too, it'll be, you know, you're out of luck if you don't have that.
Well, again, it, it, it shows, it puts the burden on the developer. Show me how you.
Prove it to us.
Goals. Show me how you're gonna meet the fuel goals. Show me how you're gonna meet the backup power goals.
Yeah.
Then we'll know. Whereas, uh, the little X in the box means we're blind to it.
Yeah.
I agree.
It's just, it's, I don't know what, uh, and mostly, I think it's for me, you know, I don't, I, I've. Never experienced one of these things. Uh, up close. Maybe I have, but and I didn't even know it.
They're so quiet.
Well, that could, and I'm not, you know, I'm not like, I'm trying to be. You know, but I just, I feel like we should be careful and then. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, then, then we reel it in a little bit. You know, and, and maybe we just plan on revisiting this in a year or in, you know, whatever, and see where we're at. It hasn't done what we wanted it to do.
There'll be what applications you get.
Yeah.
Of that, well, if you make a rule for this. You have to figure out why you're not making the rule for something that looks and feels the same.
Or maybe you should. But no, we're not, no.
So maybe i- if in fact we include the logic somehow embedded in the document, should it be there is that. Due to the unknown of this. You're just not able, this is weird, cause we're making decisions here based on things because we don't know. That's what we know.
Yeah, you always do.
Not really, we're, we're pretty good.
Life is full of making decisions on.
Yeah, but this time we're making decisions based on, I'm not sure how it's gonna.
But we have to put criteria.
We have to put criteria.
And we're concerned.
That's, that's right. So in this case, we're gonna limit the size. We will have some limitations and, uh. It needs a, a special permit because of the current unknowns. Otherwise it'll be challenged.
Well, it's also, it's a rapid, because of, it's a rapid change in technology. And that's, that's what I would.
And this is a new thing and we.
Well, no, it's change, rapid change, cause it's gonna be different in five years from.
That part's true. That's right.
So that would make sense for the reason for a special permit versus something else.
It's woodwork.
That's the reason. Yeah, that would make sense.
So woodworking technology isn't changing.
No, the wood doesn't change.
A perfect example of wanting to know how they do things is one of the green papers that they had, they were talking about. Backup power and they said fuel cells. Everybody says, oh, fuel cells are great, but fuel cells run on hydrogen most. Lot of times, and we don't have hydrogen sitting around, so it's probably in some big ginormous tank.
Uh, you can run, you can run a fuel cell on, on natural gas.
Yeah.
Somebody says fuel cell.
Yeah.
Runs off naturally.
But. Yeah, depending on power and.
So where are you getting it, right? Where'd you get your hydrogen from?
Yeah, so if somebody came in and said, yeah, I wanna run fuel cells, you know, but I wanna use hydrogen instead. You know, and I'm gonna have this very large. Pressurized hydrogen container, you know, which is essentially the Hindenburg, you know, um.
Yeah, but you have it in a steel container.
Oh, yeah.
Blows up and it's.
I mean, but.
You know how they.
Intestines.
Would we, and all the damage that was done, it came from the diesel fuel, not from the hydrogen. Hydrogen took, took off the container.
Yeah.
Which made the thing drop. E- everybody's burns and the actual physical damage to the steel and whatnot. It was the diesel fuel.
Hmm.
Hydrogen took burns and goes away and it's up, it went up, it was in, in seconds it was gone.
All right.
Yeah, so. Scary, but.
How do you?
So are we saying, are we saying a maximum of fifteen thousand square feet with special permit?
I was gonna go for twelve, Kevin. I know you said ten.
Shall we go to ten?
Oh, yeah. I'll go to ten. You know, it's, it's a number, right? And I think that, uh, my feeling is, I would rather start. Slow. And then, and then maybe just plan on revisiting this in a year, if you can put up with this, Jeff, but, uh.
I need more money.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm just, you know.
That's all we'd be changing, when it looks like ten thousand, if it didn't work.
Yeah.
More than, then make, then, but make it twelve five, please.
You like that idea.
Well, I mean, you know.
They start with twelve five, so.
It's a concession either way, but if it has a special permit in it, we're good for the moment, right?
Twelve five's good, cause we're more than meeting the need.
We more, we beat, we beat what's in town right now, right? That's a good business perspective of land use. So we did.
We'll do twelve five.
You know, it's really sort of.
Go on, this is.
This is just, this is just a number, right? And, and we don't even, and honestly, I don't even, I mean, I know how big of a building that is, but I don't know what the impacts are gonna be from this at that number. But I wanna be, I wanna be.
No, we don't know what the impact will be.
Acoustic is.
All right.
I, I think that it's, uh.
Twelve five.
We'll start with twelve five. It's just.
All right.
We're picking.
And ever, and five years from now, people are reading regulations.
All of those. Scare it on YouTube. Oh, Michael's here.
So based on current usage in town. Coming up with twelve five.
Twelve.
At this time.
Better than any number we have.
No, it's, that's a logical number.
Yes, it's a logical number.
Okay.
Based on current use.
That's right.
Usage.
And if I get feedback from any of the other companies after today and. Someone comes back with something wildly larger, I will let you know.
Well, who was the twelve five, Jeff?
I'm sorry.
You didn't have, who was the twelve five?
It was, uh, the, the eleven thousand seven hundred was Pfizer.
Oh, Pfizer, so, okay.
Oh, eleven thousand seven hundred.[1631.81]
So it sounds like.
No, but usually doesn't have their data center.
Yeah, that's good.
But they pro, they may be the biggest user of digital data. Cause all their design work, you build three D models, and they have to do two D drawings after that based on.
Right.
So it's probably, plus all their normal operating.
But that's all in-house in the. In the building?
No, it's all, I think, well, it used to be a CSC in Norwich. And I've been in that building, and I wouldn't even know there was a data center. You can't tell it, doesn't make any noise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's that big of a. Physical lane.
Couple of questions, are we following your? Paper? As the. Ground, that, that, as the basis.
Well, it has, to me, the controls are.
You have a couple of things we wanted to change on.
You wanna change them, yes.
Well, you had the noise standard, you wanted.
The noise standard would be changed. The buffer maybe would be changed.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, if we are limiting. Are we eliminating accessory? That definition?
Yeah, I don't know, if you need it or not.
I didn't think we'd need it at all.
I don't think you need it, then.
It's a lot easier to have one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what if someone does want to put an accessory in?
No, they put it on.
As a, as a data center, but it's, but it, it was on the same lot as another existing operation.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, that's what you're saying.
I think we were looking for a weakening of.
Yeah, 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 no. Soften the.
So, uh, yeah, force a small, you know, small center. That was a reason for it, I believe.
Right, so the reason for the accessory was so that you could have. You could have it in these other zoning districts. So. Again, are we going back to? These are only allowed in the industrial districts? Or do you want to allow them at a smaller, even smaller scale in other districts?
Oh, I think you, with that, you can expand its use. Maybe what we were saying, where you could have an accessory, you could.
Commercial.
Commercial, I think CN or these. Down, the downtown districts, maybe you could.
Do you really wanna have that kind of use in the, in a place where we're trying to attract retail?
No, why not?
Well, not a. You're, you're using space that could be, you know, I don't know what.
Yeah, but we have office buildings there.
Yes, you have office buildings.
Look at the bank.
But these aren't office. But you don't have woodshops.
Oh, you don't have woodshops.
So that, I'll go back to that, so that, we don't want them there, then. Yeah, and I think, I mean. Accessory use, if in fact, the guy who sells unpainted furniture. If he had a woodshop at his back. That would be okay, it'll be accessory use. And so now we're saying, fine, if you want to put a thousand square feet of. Of a data center in the back.
Oh, in the bank, it should be all.
Yeah, no, I think the thing, the point that I would make is that.
That would be your.
We've got a downtown where you're trying to attract people, right, that's what we want down there, are people, and these things don't attract people, no one's gonna work. No one's gonna be working, living nearby.
Absolutely.
And so really, you don't want them where people.
But a small one as an accessory use would be okay, that's the reason.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So maybe that's the idea.
Keeping accessory, two thousand square feet. Keeping accessory at a small.
Pick a number for accessory use, yeah. That'll be really. That would be a smaller number for, say like Groton, maybe that's why we need feedback from a place like Groton Chelsea. How big of a space do they need, what, what kind of needs does a business like?
You don't know, it's tomorrow, it may be tomorrow.
Yeah, I promise you that the bank right now uses a couple hundred feet. Yeah, just, I think. It's small. It's tiny, so. All right, then that, you don't have to do that, Jeff. No, no, I'm just trying to, I am just trying to learn.
Ten percent.
So, or, or make a thousand, because it's just not an impact.
No, I.
No, right, real.
Just a small number, yeah, thousand square feet's pretty big.
That's twenty by fifty, according to your thinking, or if I'm thinking a thirty by thirty room, worst case scenario.
It's a big, yeah, I'll bet they wouldn't.
Okay, say five, say, one dude, very small, five hundred.
Thousand, no. Do it big enough so you don't. Get into that.
Why do you need to have that?
We don't care why you'd need to have it, it's just whether or not it would hurt any. Well, no, that hurt, the impact would be if it was in the, in the shopping district, or some, you know, retail or something like that, and then we're using space.
No one's gonna use retail space for this, like.
They would have it inside, if it's small, it would be inside, like a warehouse.
Absolutely, unless they wanna, unless they wanna show it all.
Use it plain, so you won't have a storefront, if you have a data center, it's, it's an accessory.
That's true, it's like having a.
Okay.
Having a back room in a store.
Then are we gonna use the same, uh, minimum number and twenty percent or something like that, or?
No.
Of an existing use. Thousand.
Oh, what makes it accessory?
Oh, what makes it, yeah, what's a thousand feet?
Thousand feet or a percentage of the existing building, or just a thousand feet?
I don't know, probably a thousand feet is adequate, isn't it?
Well, we're saying if it's max, otherwise you have a twenty square foot, build a, a office with a thousand square foot. Yeah, that, yeah, so that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense, so at what point? So it's the definition of accessory, what is?
I guess so, yeah.
So, would seem like, do we have some other definition of this accessory that we just apply, that we don't have to reinvent that? Yeah, so, let's just do that. Well, we have it for. You know, residential, uh. Houses, right?
Yeah, but that's a square footage, yeah, thousand feet, is it a thousand feet? It's a state statute, it used to be.
Right, so accessory use does not have a, a. Maximum square footage, right, right, it's just a definition. Um, but other accessory uses, like accessory dwelling units, right, you do, you do impose, um. A square footage maximum. So I would imagine you could do the same here, and then. Allow those in more zones, the commercial zones.
Right.
Yeah, why don't we just say a percentage of the principal use?
No.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we're talking about, is that what makes it accessory, is that it's a smaller than.
Max, maximum of ten, a thousands. Whichever is lower.
Yeah, which we want to avoid, right?
Want to avoid the barber shop having a thousand square foot. So you say.
And so we have.
Thousand feet or twenty percent, whichever is.
Which is what we have in the last draft I provided for you all.
Yeah, I think that that, that would seem.
Twenty percent or a thousand square feet, whichever is less.
Brutal.
Excellent.
Okay.
So, we'll put that in. Okay, what, so, okay, that, so that would replace your number eight. Yeah.
That would be right in the definition of accessory.
That was, yeah. Accessory data center.
Otherwise, that's it.
Then we set it along twelve five.
Yes, I've got twelve five, your final answer.
Yeah.
And the last question was, special permit, not special?
Yes.
Sounds like everybody wants special permit, special.
For the time being. At this time.
Conditions for the standard for data centers, not never accessory, right?
No, accessory would not require.
Yes.
So that's really the accessory differences, size and those special.
So not, no special permit for accessory? Correct.
Nope.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes, no.
And with it, with all the zones that.
That was my next question.
For accessory data centers, what zones?
Right.
Seeing a whole number, Jeff, Richard is, uh, like, most of them except for the green zones. Do you want to allow these in residential zones?
No.
No. You can't put them in the, yeah, basement of your short term rental.
Not funny.
Hope you have lots of rent.
Not in the residential districts. What about the mixed use districts?
Sure.
Next juice, you can have.
I'd say sure, it's mixed use, it's fair for you. And this is just the accessory.
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 And I guess we'd have to add it into the WW district.
Yep.
What about the MDD?
That just seems like, uh.
Stick downtown?
Like a terrible waste of space. Yeah, I get it.
That's gonna be self included. And no one would do it, yes, let's put our. Plug, plug, sure. But Chelsea Groton is gonna have. I guarantee.
The ability to have one, yes.
And they have.
I think.
Branches in the MDD.
Sure.
But, so they wouldn't need.
Yeah, yeah, no, and the, and the real estate is so valuable, is this the use that you want to do, or do you want to be used to attract people?
It's the owner's use.
No, but we also have a, a, a desire to, you know, make our debt miss, the MDD district work. As best as.
Definition of accessory, it would make it so small.
Yeah, no, or doesn't require any parking.
Yeah, but with the cost of the rents in those buildings. They would not even.
Mike, we always had these concerns when the fifth ice cream store.
Yeah.
Downtown, and it was, do we really need another ice cream shop?
Sure.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, no, it's, uh.
Surprising is that you increase some of those, and they do more business than they had.
Well, it becomes the place where people go for ice cream.
Market demand.
Yeah.
Look at all the. Becomes known as a location for ice.
Yeah. So like, we have an end.
Okay, I do have one follow-up question about residential districts, because we have had this conversation before. And where I thought we had landed last time we talked, and again, you're. Obviously welcome to change your mind, uh, but as a reminder, in the last draft I gave you. We said that within residential zoning districts. Data centers, accessory. Accessory, uh, yeah, accessory data centers would be okay if they were, uh. Part of a permit institutional or commercial use. Uh, but not accessory to a residential use.
Right, that's true, the schools, schools would need it.
That's right.
Fire departments have.
Exactly.
Or like where the school administrative offices, they, that would be logical to have a.
Yeah, so, so that's exactly right.
They might have.
That's true, yeah.
In a closet, right? They have one server in the closet, that's it.
It's about it. School might have, school might have, school might have better, more than that, or at some point, they will have more than that, but that's okay. Sure.
Twenty percent, but then you use a twenty percent rule, wouldn't be that big.
Oh, it's, it would be, go five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jeff, do you wanna give us, like, I, we're getting real close here, maybe we need to just. Have you propose questions that remain in your mind? Or then we can respond or not, or have we covered everything that you feel comfortable with this?
I think so, so my, my approach for the next draft, I'm going to take. And what Jeff Richard did. And then we talked about. Bringing in other components from my last draft. So to bring back special permit. To bring backs. Uh, for example, the utility notification. To bring back the, uh. Size issue, the twenty percent or one thousand square feet for accessory. To bring back the security plan, the fire suppression plan. Uh, to bring back what we just discussed. What's up?
Do we need a security plan?
I'm sorry, fire suppression, you're right, we did not discuss security, we discussed fire suppression.
No, I think that was in one of them, but I. I would try to eliminate it as much to that as we can.
Yeah.
If we don't need a plan. You know, like.
I don't disagree, it seemed like the majority of folks. Wanted that back, but if I misunderstood.
Speaking now, I think. When you were talking very large data centers, I think you'd need those things.
Batteries or something, that would always be a concern.
But the small ones that we're going to allow, I don't think you need a lot of those plans anymore. Well, you can put it in a draft, and we can always debate it.
Well, we debated a lot, so if we can, if we can not do something that, you know, you don't want to debate, then I'd rather do that, so.
I mean, we, once again, we don't do that for. You know, I don't, you know what I mean, it's like Electric Boat takes care of their own security, we don't concern ourselves, so. I wouldn't concern myself here.
So you specifically brought up the fire issue, so if you want to. Include that. I'm happy to, but yes, I would, I would agree against the security plan. Um, and then if you're all comfortable with the noise issue being an amendment to. Your noise ordinance. Uh, as opposed to something that's specific to data centers, you know, I, I'm supportive of that approach. And then, yeah, we had the conversation about buffers, which I don't think changes, uh. Yeah, and I think that gets us pretty darn close, we've covered. All the questions I think we need to.
So maybe we could just get a draft and then comment on it ourselves, and then send it back to Jeff, rather than. Having.
Yeah, I, hopefully we're close enough now that you can just, you know, send written comments, and we can get cleaned up. And, uh, yeah, I should be able to. Turn this around this week.
Oh, good.
Great.
Then, cause I think we're pretty close.
Yeah, there you go.
Cause it's a lot easier if we're pretty well agreed to the basics.
With short-term rentals, yeah, we're close. A few little. Nicky things.
Unless we want a special workshop, just, or maybe we can just get, collect everybody's written comments. Just on the draft that, on Jeff's next draft. And unless they become unbelievable.
IG and IM have minimum forty thousand square foot lots, does that conflict with Jeff's? Forty thousand, yes.
Then you don't have to, to have the twenty thousand. I was just looking at it. Just to prevent somebody having a real small lot.
Okay.
In the noisy. Noisy data.
Yes, it can be locked in in the IG, starting with forty thousand.
Yes, right. So it becomes moot, just like.